All right, I would like to go ahead and call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, October 10th of 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanyon?
President.
Pratt?
Here.
Bellinger?
Here.
Reins?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
All right, I am looking for approval of the agenda unless there's any additions or changes that need to be made.
So, I...
You don't.
Oh, I forgot, sorry.
That's okay.
I retract my motion.
Thank you.
I would like to make an amendment to these orders to add an action item for D for a NESA alternate, since I cannot make it as a backup this next week, and Tom is not eager, we should probably come up with another alternate.
Okay, all right. Do I have support?
Support.
All right, thank you. So, we are moving into the end of this year, we do have a lot of...
I have to vote.
Oh, we have to vote first? All right, can we have a roll call, please? Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
All right.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation if there's anybody that would like to step forward. State your name, please.
Hi, good evening, I'm Julie Bricksy. I'm a state representative in the 69th House District, and because of the great work of the voters, not politicians, we have all new House Districts here in Williamson, in Michigan, and Williamson has been added into my House District. My new district will be the 73rd District, should I win my election. And I just wanted to come out and introduce myself to you folks and tell you a little bit about me, because I haven't done any work with you in the past. Like you, I care a lot about local government, and I served in local government for 18 years before going to the legislature. I started out volunteering on the zoning board of appeals as an alternate, then went to the planning commission, served as a township trustee for eight years, and then was the full-time elected treasurer for a decade before going to the legislature. So, I appreciate all the work that you folks are doing, I know that it is a labor of love, and one of the things that motivated me to run for the legislature was my frustration with so many unfunded mandates coming from the legislature. And so that's something that I've been very committed to, and I think that we have a lot of really exciting opportunities with all of the transformational money that's been coming in from the federal government as a response to help stimulate the economy after the pandemic. So I just want you to know I'm here for you, and I've given you all my cards, please don't ever hesitate to reach out to me, I'd be happy to talk to you about any projects you're working on, and I know that we... I have been working with the Rotary Club on a water trail system that I know goes through... It's multi-jurisdictional, from the city, the township, Meridian Township, East Lansing, and we are making some efforts to assist in the application for grants for that project. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming this evening, we appreciate it. Anyone else for audience participation at this time? All right, moving along, we've got our council meeting minutes of September 26, 2022, I'm looking for approval unless there's changes that need to be made. Thank you so much, Julie, you have support? Thank you, Terry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Noah, we have opportunity for accounts payable.
Yes, I have an opportunity to go through all the accounts payable. I did notice that we are starting to see increases in some of our expenditures for brine salt, some other things for the waste water treatment group, but other than that, everything looked great. And so with that being said, I didn't have any additional questions for John or any of the other department heads, so I'm going to make a motion to approve checks 75987, dated 9/22/22, to check 76035, dated 9/28/22, ACH account 315 through 320, or 315 through 320, a total of $2,673,859.77, and I open it up to the rest of the board if they want to ask questions to John or anybody else.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Terry.
Curious to know what Rocket Mortgage is.
John?
So Rocket Mortgage is one of the largest mortgage companies in the world now, probably, right in Detroit, and I have the same question. So those are refunds, the mortgage company, either the mortgage company paid the taxes or the property owner did, and so there's so many to Rocket, but they're all individual parcel numbers.
Yep.
So it's just a refund for the mortgage company. Taxes were already paid.
Like in escrow, sometimes.
So most of the time you pay for mortgages, the mortgage company pays, but if you pay it, the mortgage company both, and there's a re-lock. Got it.
I could show you those in here later, I was just curious.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, do I have support for accounts payable? Did you say that real quick?
Yeah, it is.
All right.
Sorry. It wasn't like here. So who supported me? Did I get the...
Dan. All right, Holly, will you call the roll for accounts payable, please? Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right, moving right along, we have our first action item, which is the MML Liability and Property Pool Insurance Renewal. Go ahead. Sorry, I'm not like a bleeding kind right now, I'm trying to be very careful.
Where did he call it? Thank you.
Throw it away, we'll open it, we have the new chairs.
I know. There's this on there.
So this is our annual liability and property pool insurance renewal. There is a slight increase this year, we did have added coverage for additional vehicle, additional officer, and then our new equipment in the police department, body cameras and other equipment. Happy to answer any questions you may have, I mean, the percent increase would be in line with the things that we added. For those of you who don't know, there's really three primary ways that local governments get insurance, either through the MML pool, through another pool, the acronym is MMRMA, which is Michigan Municipal Risk Management Agency or something. One of those.
Authority.
The majority do go with MML, the third option would be to self-insure, we're really not hard enough to do that, so.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions you may have, but renewal is pretty straightforward, and this is an item that you'll see annually from now until the end of time.
And I think there was just possibly one question, that added coverage on one additional title vehicle, is that the additional new Ford Interceptor over?
Yeah, it's either that or I knew we were about to receive a vehicle in DPW, so.
I'm not sure which one.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
Well, just to guess, I believe the police vehicle was replacing Chief's, so the new... that's one for one, the new vehicle would probably be the new truck, Scott's been waiting on for a couple of years now.
Yeah, right.
They finally show up.
Well, all right. Okay, all right, are there any questions regarding this?
So I'm trying to apply this to my own finance situation, I've got insurance on my car, I've got insurance on my house, I have a balloon thing or an umbrella policy and stuff like that, so this covers all of the insurance for everything?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, through the chair, if you look on page five and six, it has the coverage and the coverage limitations for all the various things that we have. If you look towards the back, there's also, you know, there's cop hands-up crime coverage, and that covers things like employee crime, endangerment, and like that. There's also, what can come in here, and hopefully you never have to execute that, is if your municipality does become engaged in a lawsuit, the MML will... Most of the time it'll cover the loss, if there isn't any of the things that you lose, but probably 99.9% of the time, the loss will pay for the defense of that.
All right.
It was involved in an organization, we had D and O insurance, Dr. Knott, and officers' insurance case, individual people within the organization were sued by outside people, is that sort of thing covered here as well?
You're covered as... Yeah, as elected officials, you're covered by the blanket coverage.
So the answer is yes.
All right. Oh yeah, go ahead, Dan.
I'll make a motion for approval of the insurance proposal for Michigan Municipal Liability and Property Pool for the policy term 10/122 through 9/30 of 2023, in the amount of $76,694.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have support? Thank you. All right, if there's no other questions or discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right. Next is our concrete contract with Able Concrete, and Scott is here, so I'll go ahead and turn this right over to you.
Yes, in your packet you have a memo from me, there's two actions that are being requested. One of them is for our annual sidewalk repair, which is kind of a backlog of a few years here, we had a real hard time in the pandemic getting some stuff accomplished, and we need people to give us quotes, so we're catching up with a lot of that, and in fact, I said in the discussion part that anybody that comes in after this, they're going to have to wait till next year, but then one came in the day after, and I talked with the contractor and he said, "I can do it, it's right down the street from another one." So the number that's in your request for number one would be increased from $21,617 by $3,500 to $25,117, if you would like to entertain that.
All right.
And that, for the most part, most of this is, we have to pass through the whole cost to the contractor and pay that, and then the city is recouping roughly 50%, not exactly, because there's a little bit of plus and minus, and one of the parts is on city property, so we have to do 100% of that. But like individual homeowners, the city's ordinance has a 50-50 share, city pays 50% and they pay 50%, so that's incorporated in this, and most of the people have chosen to have a voluntary assessment put on their taxes, because the city does a, I think it's 6% per year type of thing, and then their payment's much lower. So, in fact, the one that came in, that's what they chose. So, that's the first motion that's requested. The second one is pertaining to the DDA parking lot repairs. After all that work came together with the asphalt, we took a really hard look at, there's some curb in there that's, you know, really jacked up in some areas, and then some of the structures in there need to be fixed or lowered a little bit, but then like a concrete pad poured around them so that the asphalt can match into that. So Able Concrete is able to work with the contractor that we have going along over there and provide a pricing for that as well.
Excellent. All right, questions for Tom?
You're talking about the parking lot behind the downtown businesses by the river?
Correct. So it'll really screw that area of town up very nicely, John looked at the budgets and I guess you guys chose at an earlier meeting to work with the DDA in advance, construct that, so.
Right.
Do you have anything to add about the finances on this part?
I don't, other than this, the second item, if council approves it, it would be, the DDA would be the funding for that, and we'd just fund it with the available dollars they have on hand this year, and we just amend their budget to do that.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, and that second motion with the DDA parking lot, that's really going to finish off that whole boardwalk area, I'm so excited that we're able to do that sooner rather than later. Any questions, Dan?
So with the first motion with the funding for the sidewalk program, if, assuming that that motion goes through, if when that occurs, we could, when we know they're out there working, if we could take a couple pictures of the work that's being done, and then maybe give a quick bullet point on our Facebook page with the photo of what our sidewalk program is?
Yep.
Because there's been about two or three in the last couple months, discussions on some of our local social media about how the city doesn't do anything with sidewalks, or, and there's been a lot of misinformation with it.
Misinformation, yeah.
So if we, as we're doing this, we could take some photos and then maybe bullet point what it is, and then it'll be out there, people can share it if they want, and the correct information would be there.
Happy to do that, it's a great idea.
Thanks, Dan.
And also in that, how to contact whoever in the city to get the job done, if for some reason we don't find out that there's out-of-mis facing.
Right.
So a part of it, they're like, "I don't even know who to talk to."
Right, yeah, I think educating our residents on that, because it has been a topic, and if we can get that information out there, we can share it, that will be helpful to those residents that seem to think that there's not a program available for them, so.
I've been around for less than a year, and this has been, there are two people that hit me up on this thing, and my response has been, "I don't know."
Yeah, well, at any time.
So will there be something posted someplace that says, "This is what you do"?
That's what Dan's asking, is so that we make it, you know, we educate our residents and...
Until it's posted, can people just call City Hall?
Yes, they can. Yes, they can.
And Barb or...
I would always love it if people would call, we have wonderful staff, it's always available when they, people call or email to answer questions, but unfortunately, we have a percentage of people that go to social media, and then they don't always get the correct answers on social media, and staff does a good job with our Facebook page, putting a lot of things out there about voting and different things like that, so since this has been a topic, it's thing, and we're dealing with it.
Right.
I think if we put in there that they have to pay 50% of repairs, they probably quit complaining too.
I think they'll do a great job with that, I think John's got it.
And I think anytime you're asked by something by a resident of the city, always refer them to contact the city offices, yes.
Okay, good. So the deal, is this applied to any sidewalk in town?
It would be the residential sidewalk that's in front of a property owner's home, is what we're talking about this evening currently.
The portion within the right-of-way, we're not going to work on stuff like, somebody will have a walk from the street sidewalk up to their front steps.
So just the street sidewalk?
Just the stuff that's parallel to the road that's in the right-of-way. It does not cover their driveway apron going out, because that's personal property.
This goes back many, many years ago, on the planning commission, actually Peter Shaw had a walkabout, and we took all our phones, and we actually physically walked every sidewalk, we moved this sidewalk to the future, and everything, and that data was collected.
Yeah.
And then it sat, but we didn't have the funding to do that.
If there's no other...
So this is covered, this is covered right here, does it cover all of the requests that we're facing right now?
There are still some that are outstanding yet to hear a response back, and because of the time of year, as those responses come in, we're probably going to be dealing with that in the spring.
In next year, okay, got it.
So, and there was an agreement with, somebody contacted us and said, "We have somebody that can do this work, and as long as they can do the acceptable work, they'll have to have it inspected and so forth," but they had somebody with concrete experience, so we allowed that type of thing, and the city can participate in that portion as well, as long as it meets requirements.
Right.
That one's going to happen in the spring because of timing and stuff. As people are talking about this, I mean, this is getting very late season, you really don't want to do much more than this, because it's not good for concrete to be poured in cold weather and then have salt and other things on it, so.
But they could get queued up for springtime.
They can get queued up for next year.
And that's probably going to be...
And there's...
Wonder what happens?
Yes.
All right, excellent.
Do they replace the sidewalk or just level it?
We've done a little bit of leveling this year, and that we took care of, because there were small sections, and the city was able to take care of some of those as an experiment to see how well that worked.
What do you think?
And I was pretty pleased with most of it, there's a few tough areas, so we, you know, in working with the contractor, the separate contractor from this, but we were experimenting with some of that this year.
Okay.
Well, since we have two requested actions, I'm looking for that first motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of the 2022 concrete sidewalk program projects, and they might not exceed 25,117 from Able Concrete.
Thank you, do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yeah.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
All right, I'm looking for that second requested action.
Make a motion to approve concrete repairs in DDA parking lot, not to exceed 25,760 from Able Concrete.
Thank you so much, direct support?
Support.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, our last action item this evening was our additional action item, and that is for our NESA alternative, alternate. Tom is our NESA representative, however, as we're coming up to the end of this year, Noah has been our backup, our alternate to go to these meetings for Tom when Tom is not available. However, we have a situation coming up where Tom and Noah both will be unable to go to the meeting next week?
This week.
Oh, this week, so we're looking for, to name an alternate, relieve Noah of his responsibility as an alternate, because we also know that Noah will not be joining us in the new year as of right now. So I am wondering if, Dan, if you would be interested in taking that spot as alternate? I know you have a very big interest in NESA, and you and Tom, you know, I know you guys have lots of conversations.
I can do that.
All right, so I'd like to name Dan Reins as our NESA alternate for when Tom is not available. So would somebody like to make that motion for me, please?
I will make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Good idea.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. Moving on, we've got our discussion items, any update with our road diet?
I do not have anything to add, I don't think Mr. DeVries does.
We have talked with, actually Spicer, about putting together possibly the concept plan that we'll need for a public presentation.
Excellent.
It's a very low-budget type thing.
Sure.
But we need to have, MDOT told us this during the conference call that we had, that we need to have something for a public participation meeting.
Excellent.
So they're working on getting something put together for us.
And so in future discussion items, you'll be able to start giving us an idea of what that's going to look like for our public education, because we know that this isn't going to get done until springtime, so we'll have a calendar of events, of when we're going to hold open houses and canvas, with information.
That's correct, yeah. What we'll have is, we'll have, excuse me, we'll have an approval item for council to hire someone, likely be Spicer, to do that work for us, and then we'll have the concept plan from the city limit to east to west, and then MDOT will review that and, you know, hopefully approve it, and then that will give us the ability to have those plans available for a public meeting.
Excellent.
I've always anticipated February, or not February, but sometime after the holiday, after the first of the year, to start public meetings.
Excellent.
What will the public meeting be like? Will it be in this room here, and we have a projector thing, and it shows the plans, and paper copies are available?
That's correct, yep, and if we have the need, then we would, you know, book a bigger room, either the NESA room or somewhere at the school, if we think that the need is large enough for folks, we would do that.
And I would have to assume, John, correct me if I'm wrong, this is going to be a big ramp up of educating our entire community, because this is going to be a huge change coming down Grand River, so we don't want to just have one meeting, we want to, you know, Facebook page, city website, publications, whether it be news release, and then also those town hall meetings that we've had in the past, and I have to, you know, tip my hat to Scott, he did a fantastic job when we did South Putnam, yeah, Putnam, and you've been available, you know, for the residents when we did the big middle street, so, you know, this isn't Scott's first time doing something like this, putting together information for our residents when we do something significant.
Scott DeVries will be on tour starting...
Right, we'll get some t-shirts.
We'll have it on you, near you, in the greater wanting scenario.
We do have North Putnam coming up, too.
Yes, and that is right, yeah, next spring, next year, next spring, summer.
Are those happening pretty much at the same time, North Putnam and 43?
They might, actually, a lot of change in towns, it's exciting.
Yeah, oh boy, it's going to be like openness. add this to our discussion items, because I know we continually get the road diet updates, so could we add that as well so that we can, you know, as we start moving forward, this is a great jumping off point right here, because I know that that has to happen with the engineering. I'm looking for the requested action.
I'll make a motion for the approval for the Professional Engineering Services Contract in accordance with the September 28th, 2022 proposal in the amount not to exceed $5,1100 from Spicer Group for Design, Pitting and Construction Engineering Services for the Water Main Projects included in the Economic Development Initiative Program through HUD.
Thank you so much, Tom, direct support.
Certainly.
Thank you, Terry. If there's no other questions or discussion, Hallie Lee, call the role. Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Yay. Alright, our last action item this evening was our additional action item and that is for our NESA alternative, alternate. Tom is our NESA representative, however, as we're coming up to the end of this year, Noah has been our backup, our alternate to go to these meetings for Tom when Tom is not available. However, we have a situation coming up where Tom and Noah both will be unable to go to the meeting next week.
This week.
Oh, this week. So we're looking for and to name an alternate, relieve Noah of his responsibility as an alternate, because we also know that Noah will not be joining us in the new year as of right now. So I am wondering if, Dan, if you would be interested in taking that spot as alternate? I know you have a very big interest in NESA and you and Tom, you know, I, I know you guys have lots of conversations.
I can do that.
Alright, so I'd like to name Dan Ryan's as our NESA alternate for when Tom is not available. So would somebody like to make that motion for me, please?
I will make that motion.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Hallie Lee, call the role, please.
Good idea.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Alright, that concludes our action items for this evening. Moving on, we've got our discussion items, any update with our road diet?
I do not have anything to add, I don't know if Mr. DeReese does.
We, we have talked with, actually Spicer, about putting together possibly the concept plan that we'll need for a public presentation.
Excellent.
It's a very low budget type thing.
Sure.
But we need to have, and MDOT told us this during the conference call that we had, that we need to have something for public participation meeting.
Excellent.
So they're working on getting something put together for us.
And so in future discussion items, you'll be able to start giving us an idea of what that's going to look like for our public education, because we know that this isn't gonna get done till springtime, so we'll have a calendar of events, of when we're gonna hold open houses and canvass.
That's correct. What we'll have is we'll have, excuse me, we'll have, we'll have an approval item for council to hire someone, likely be Spicer, to do that work for us. And then we'll have the concept plan from, from the city limit to east to west and then MDOT will review that and, you know, hopefully approve it and then that will give us the, you know, the ability to have those plans available for a public meeting.
Excellent.
I've always anticipated February, or not February, but sometime after the holiday, after the first year.
Okay.
To start public meetings.
Excellent.
What will the public meeting be like? Will it be in this room here and we have a projector thing and it shows the plans and people are, paper copies are available?
That's correct, yep, and if we, if we have the need, then we would, you know, book a bigger room, either the NESA room or somewhere at the school, if we think that the need is large enough for folks, we would do that.
And I would have to assume, John, correct me if I'm wrong, this is gonna be a big ramp up of educating our entire community, because this is gonna be a huge change coming down Grand River.
Oh, no doubt.
So we don't wanna just have one meeting, we want to, you know, Facebook page, city website, publications, whether it be news release and then also those town hall meetings that we've had in the past. And I have to, you know, tip my hat to Scott, he did a fantastic job and we did South Putnam, yeah, Putnam. And you've been available, you know, for the residents when we did the big middle street, so, you know, this isn't Scott's first time doing something like this, putting together information for, for our residents when we do something significant.
Scott DeReese will be on tour starting in 2023.
Right, we'll get some t-shirts.
We'll help attend you near you in the greater running scenario.
We do have North Putnam coming up too.
Yes, and that is right, yeah, next, next spring, next year, next spring, summer.
Are those happening pretty much at the same time, North Putnam and 43?
They might, actually. A lot of change in town, it's exciting.
Yeah, oh boy, it's gonna be like Opus.
Well, the road diet is actually not extremely painful to go through construction wise.
Yeah.
But it is a big shift in drivers.
Yeah.
Which I would like to add, as of this moment, my wife texted me while we were setting this meeting that she was walking across the four corners and almost got hit with my two juvenile children because a woman blew through the intersection without looking and almost killed all three of them. So this did not happen soon enough.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Turning ends up being the scary one.
She was turning, she turned and almost ran them all down.
I would say that MDOT's chip seal project this, this late summer would be more disruptive for our construction.
Okay, excellent.
Because it's still, we're still getting chips, we're still dragging them in.
I know, right, yeah. Alright, well, we'll just keep talking about that each time we come together and again, adding that Water Main Projects to our discussion items list so that we can start keeping that, you know, in the front of, you know, moving forward. We did not receive any correspondence, we'll all move right into department head reports and so, John?
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy. I have a lot in my written report at the beginning of the week, or last week, so I didn't include a report this time, but we are going to be scheduling sort of a soft opening for the kayak launch this fall, we're gonna talk to DDA about that next Tuesday, then we'll let all of you know, excuse me, when that will be. And then the plan is to have, in the springtime, to have more of an official dedication of some of the area of kayak clubs, so I think that'll be really cool. Folks are, seem to be pretty excited about the sign, so that's good. And the request volume is, I think, fairly decent, nothing too difficult for the staff to handle. The school's adding their access as well and we'll update their signs, but it's really a very easy interface to update that, I've been doing it for now and Barb's capable as well, it's pretty simple, it's basically PowerPoint is what it is.
Sure.
Just like it. We will have DDA and TIF meetings next week, so, yeah, that's all I have.
One thing that I wanted to mention and I know, John, you and I talked about it, but I would like to propose that we have a naming contest, we can't call it the car wash lot anymore, we can't call it the new kayak launch, I think that it deserves an appropriate park name, so I would like you guys to put on your thinking caps, I think it'd be fun to have a community naming contest so that we could possibly, you know, unveil signage in the springtime when we do that launch and have kayak clubs here, so I thought about that and mentioned it to John when we were, I think it would be fun and it'd be really neat for our community to get involved with that, so.
I would hazard though, as we've seen from the internet, putting anything on the internet saying that we're gonna vote based on them, because otherwise you end up with a park named voting McQuo based, so.
Well, then we're not gonna take that thing's suggestion.
So we should probably be hazarding on how we take input.
Yes, there'll have to be some criteria to it, definitely criteria to it and we'd probably want.
voting McQuo launch would be the name of the park, I would put money on it.
It's not a good launch.
Tell the people on Facebook that.
Yeah, exactly, it's not about launch. But let's, 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 let's put some thought into it and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, officially announce something by the end of this year to get ready for spring, but I think it'd be fun to, yeah.
Corporate sponsorship.
Terry, we're gonna move right along to our building, we're gonna move right along to our building report. We did receive a small packet from Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineering, there's still, there's still some work going on as we're moving into the cooler months, it's always good to see, so if you do have questions, please reach out to John and he can get those answers for you from the Livingston County Department that handles that for us. So I'll keep moving right along to committee, subcommittee reports, anybody like to raise your hand and share from any meetings, I know we've had several cancellations, so, and we're winding down our year, getting close to the end. Alright, audience participation one last time before I move along, anyone out there? Yep, go ahead.
Yes, Scott and I'll work fairly middle statewide to bring your attention to two things. First of all, there's a group trying, going to open an art gallery next to the library at the middle school. The first show, the opening will be October 22nd and we're kinda hoping that council people would show up October 22nd for that opening. Second thing is the play, the new play, the polls are gone at the theater, as you know, and it's like, wow, so it's gonna be weird being there with no poll seats, but at any rate, the new play's set is amazing, you may have seen it, it's passed through Facebook. At any rate, if you haven't experienced the theater, it's really worth going to, it's always thought provoking and it's, it's always something good comes out of going there, so.
Excellent. Scott, what time is the art gallery opening on the 27th?
It's Saturday, 10 to 2.
10 to 2.
The same hours at the library.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Alright, moving along, council member comments, I'll start with Tom.
Thanks for filling in, Dan. That's all I got to say.
Alright, thank you, Terry.
I think the, the discussion thing, adding the water main thing, I have some neighbors that will be very interested in that, so, yeah, good idea.
Excellent, Noah?
Dan, good, oh, thanks.
Dan?
No comments.
Brandon?
I'm not gonna thank Dan, so.
Alright, well, we're rolling through October pretty quick, it's already the 10th. This past weekend, we had our Wizards and Warlocks in downtown Williamson, which there was a lot of activity. We have our upcoming trick or treating through downtown on the 29th, I believe, from 1 to 3, that's always fun, I know there's several trunk and treats around the community for kids. I believe our fall back will happen, so it will be light out for Halloween, 6 to, 6 to 8 on the 31st. Leaf pickup started this week, if I'm not mistaken, right, Scott? So residents, you do have the ability to put your fall leaves out at the curb unless you're on Grand River and then just put them at the grass edge of the curb and the city will come through and pick those leaves up.
What's the end date of leaf pickup?
It's.